I'm doing good, how about you?
Your son for the first time in the day. He's carrying his son to the room. He gonna grow up on it. What do you, I feel like he's busy.
He's gonna be nowhere. So we're far over.
Susan, tell me when you're ready and move on. Alright, it's nine thirty morning, Friday morning, August twenty-sixth. We call this special session Summerville County Commissioners' Court Order. Let the record show Larry Hulsey, John Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Don Crants are all present. Item, at this time, we're going to retire into executive session. And we'll take a few matters into consideration. And then we'll come back out and reconvene and open the session and move on from there. Settle Mr. Oten, if you'll stick around.
As good as you make it.
Let me know when you're ready. Alright, it's nine fifty-four, August twenty-sixth, Friday morning. We reconvene back into open session. Item number, there is no action to be taken on the executive session. Item number three, is discussed, take action on hiring freeze for Summerville County employees effective September first, twenty sixteen. And I've got a couple of questions, I'm sure all of us do. Are we discussing frees on the number of current employees, not to exceed the number that we have? Or are we discussing frees if someone were to quit, die, retire, or get fired, to not replace that person? What are we looking at?
Well, if it be anybody, they'd have to go back to the court to prove it.
So of any situations?
My, my love.
And as, as we all know, the Sheriff's Department has the highest number of employees and the Sheriff's Office has the highest number of turnovers. So, say one, two, three deputies, or one or two jailers, or one or two dispatchers, before that place were to get rehired, do you want them to come back before the court?
Yes, I do.
Is that your opinion, Larry?
I think we're gonna have to, to, if we pass this budget like it is.
Okay. Okay.
So we're really not putting in a freeze, we're putting in a, a review process by which to approve hiring.
And are we walking a fine line on telling elected officials how to run their departments?
Yes.
That's the question.
If the money's not there, somebody's gonna have to look at it.
But isn't that up to the elected official?
Right, okay.
Is that actually up to us?
It's either this or a budget that passed by.
Okay, and then that means things grind out, all come first? Is that, is that the pathway ahead?
How are they gonna cover ten percent if they don't watch what's coming?
A ten percent, is that would be, you give them ninety percent, and they can go a long way on their employees.
You're right, I don't think that we can tell elected officials how to run their office.
But is that where we're headed, I mean, is that, if we're gonna approve or disapprove their hiring?
No, no, they, right now, countywide, if we, if we approve this going from September one until we live to, they cannot hire anybody, whether they leave, whether they fall out on the street or whatever, without bringing it back to the court.
Even elected official?
Yes.
Cannot hire anybody in their office without being covered before the court?
Yes.
Is that your agreement, Larry?
Wouldn't you ask majority of court?
Well, you two roughed this to me, the ones who put it on here, so I'll tell you.
I'm, I'm in agreement.
Alright, so if an agreement were to be reached with limited, and we were able to come to a situation...
This is a temporary freeze.
Alright, and if, if we were to get paid, say, thirty, sixty, ninety, hundred, twenty days, January thirty-first, would y'all want to lift this immediately?
That's a what if, we're looking at what we've got right now.
That's what I'm saying, if we were to get paid, I'm with hypothetical situation. Are you wanting to lift what you want to put in place today, the next time we have a meeting, immediately?
That's what temporary means.
Does the majority accorded agreement with that, I guess?
Well... The restriction is to hold your budget to ninety percent of what it is.
Correct.
And if you lose a person, credible person, or a non-credible, you're still responsible for working within that ninety percent of the bank.
Correct.
And...
Well, what we're saying is we want to approve or disapprove every person they hire, is what I'm understanding.
Within, within this temporary freeze?
And the jail, if we lose one or two there, we all know we have state standards, we have to meet, and keep that up. We all understand that.
The private war, the court proves it at the time. But we don't want them just to automatically replace, 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 since it does not know that bad it has already done. Whoever it is, whoever the department is.
We, we've asked...
During this time.
We've asked department heads over and over to see if they can cut their budget. They don't wanna cut it, so...
And Larry, I know this is not a place to argue, but here again, we discussed the other day, we've, y'all, not we, y'all have cut over four and a half million dollars out of this budget with the department heads in tow to do what they did.
Yeah, I do volunteer.
Yes, that's four and a half million, that's a pretty good job. So you really can't say that they haven't done anything. Correct? I mean, y'all done a good job last...
Some department heads have worked with them, some have not been due consideration.
Okay.
If, yeah, this is drastic, but if, if we pass this budget like you propose,
Right.
And we're gonna hold them to ninety percent,
Right.
Well, what do you suggest?
I, I agree, but I have also told each of you many times, that we do also need some time into September to see what happens, what works itself out into January. And I, I have agreed that many times, in February, March, we may even get rest. I have never disagreed with that. I think I've talked to every department head, I've said that to them individually.
And is asking too much to do a temporary freeze right now?
It appears that we just keep putting more and more stipulations on elected officials, the department heads, and the employees.
Well, I guess that's what the Commissioners' Court is for.
You got it. It's to set the budget, and govern the budget, and be a viable, feasible, doable budget, is what our job is.
Our responsibility is to get the budgets down where we can operate. Sometimes this court, it's their responsibility to make the moves that's necessary to do. If the department heads don't wanna work with us, then the court has to act.
But Don, department heads and employees have worked with us many, many...
Some have.
Many times. Well, if y'all want to finish item three, then we'll go to item number four.
My, my question's gonna be, you know, is countywide, I mean, when, when I'm thinking about like the golf course, I mean, they're running people in and out, you know, especially part-time people, somebody quit, and so what we're saying is that Dove can't replace that person until we call a court. And so we're, we're risking service issues at the golf course, because again, get a car attendant hired before the weekend, because somebody quit on Thursday? I mean, these people just somehow don't show up, or they just call in and say, "I'm done," no notice. And he has to turn around and get somebody hired before the weekend, but he can't now, because we have to post an agenda and have him come in and get approval. I, I think we're, we're, we may have some unintended consequences here.
With private enterprise, doesn't it fall under that?
Well, I'm asking, I mean, when you say countywide, it's from stem to stern. If we are carving out, then we need to make sure that we understand what is carved out, so that, you know, those operations can continue. You know, and does it include part-time, does it not? I mean, you know, those type things, so I mean, but if we just pass it as it's countywide, then, you know, we're, we're bound to, because they're, they're a part of the county.
It all falls on the same umbrella, unless the motion stays different?
Yes, sir. You know, and I, I'm just saying that, that the type folks that he hires for like car attendants and, and hospitality folks, you know, they don't necessarily put in two weeks' notice all the time. They, you know, they just call in and say, "I'm done," and he's, he has to scramble.
Okay, does that fall under part-time?
Most of those positions are...
Daddy, daddy, next vote, but it falls under part-time, but it's an enterprise fund which is separate from what we're talking about.
Is that the way you want to make it, if, when the motion is made?
Probably so.
Well...
And I know the department heads thinks that the expo and golf course in the part of city town.
Well, do I entertain a motion, somebody wanna try to work that like they think it needs to be worked?
I'll give it a shot.
Alright.
I'll make motion that we have a temporary hiring freeze effective September one, excluding our two enterprise.
I have a motion by Larry to have a hiring freeze countywide, except for the two enterprise, except for the enterprise funds, is that correct? That includes elected officials and department heads. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Kenneth and a second by Don. Do we have any further discussion or complaints or issues?
Okay, if we pass this, it's a temporary hiring freeze. If I'm a department head, what actions, or course of action should I take if I need to replace an individual?
Should we go back to court? Case, case basis.
So should the wording of this proposal be that any new hires would be presented to the court outside of the...
During this temporary freeze?
Wrong. Enterprise funds.
I do, I guess I don't follow this. I'm sorry.
Well, a temporary freeze means finality, it means we're freezing this, alright? But I don't think that really encompasses real, real-life situations, whereas you have to have a method by which to address a key position, or a position that needs to be filled. And if we don't word this, that, that gives a method by which to come and present to the Commissioners' Court, I guess. And then you've got a very small box shop right there. Very definitive thought.
Well, of course, the way, the way I've understood it is that we've carved out golf course and expo from this, this freeze. So they're not even subject to it, is, is why...
Only because they're an enterprise system.
Right.
Okay, they're being treated as a business.
Right.
That's what I interpret it as.
Same here, and so this, this freeze basically affects all general government positions and departments and elected officials.
But I, I guess the, the embedded question here, is it a temporary freeze if you have an approval process? Which I think, I'm hearing that if we had to hire somebody, you'd bring it before the court.
The, the freeze is the discretion of the department heads and the county officials, that's the freeze, they can no longer make their own hires.
Well, the Commissioners' Court has to make...
They have to come to the court to make a hire.
Right. If they dictate what I can have.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Susan.
So say Nikki quits, no notice, and I need to hire somebody to do payroll. So I need to come to the court to get permission to even run a ad before that process even starts?
How do y'all see that happen?
Well, if you take the court out and you do run ads anyway, you wouldn't have, without this freeze, that's how that process works, right?
So are you allowed to do interviews, just not hire without coming before the court?
No, no, I said that, she's saying that she's gotta come to court and run ads. You have to run ads anyway, so that takes some time.
Yes.
I think that, um, come to court, try to make a bigger deal out of it than what it is.
Really?
Yeah.
So we need to come to court to get permission to start the process, or come to court to get permission to hire?
Yes, first, that's what he's saying.
So it could be two, three months before I get somebody in place to do payroll?
Pardon me? Yeah.
Wow.
I don't know how long, I don't, I don't know, it needs to come back in a month?
It could.
And we do...
Find somebody qualified?
And I know it's...
Would that be the process every?
Three months?
Where's the three months coming from, I don't understand that, because...
So, so are y'all gonna wanna come to court every week?
We have to, in that time, we have to, if you interview, we have to call a special meeting to...
So if it's gonna be that many people quit, and y'all gonna have to flex everywhere?
Well, of court positions.
Well, that's what y'all, that's a worse... Come up with a better idea, will ya?
Well, don't we all understand here, this group is sitting here, that all of us elected officials on an equal playing field? None of us have any more power than others, except that we do dictate the budget, we do that. But we're actually taking the hiring away from elected officials like Susan, our great goal, our Allen West, our... That, that's my, my only issue, is we're taking that part of what is defined by them to be able to do away from it.
I guess like, you're, you're a different situation out there, two of y'all. Bigger departments might can deal away with it, personally, I don't know. But the point is our employees are, our employees are the biggest, what's that, sixty-five percent of our budget percentage?
It's certainly our, our single...
How are we gonna trim this budget, without someone second guessing, will they need a hard hand or not?
Who's gonna run the county, Larry? The employees. We have to take care of our employees.
What if we don't have the money? No, we don't, our, this court's responsibility is for taxpayers, providing services, have a minimum tax.
I get it.
That's our, that's our, this court's responsibility is to take care of the taxes.
But we're carving out the expo center?
But that'd be what?
We're carving out the expo center, we're carving out the golf course? But you're gonna do this to the employees, I don't get that.
And Larry, here again, I'm not trying to sound sarcastic in all of this, but if, if we keep taking away, you know, these department heads, these elected officials, they have offices to run. They actually have duties they perform. You know, they work, one group works seven to three, one group works seven to eight, one group works eight to five.
Somebody's gonna have to give up some services that we're providing now, the way we're providing, somebody's gonna have to, until the money starts going back in.
So then maybe the services that we provide is where you may be headed eventually, maybe in February, March. The services that we actually provide is where they'll actually take a direct hit someday. Okay, well, I have a motion by Kenneth and a second by Don. Did I say something, Jeff? And we have any further discussion? Yes, we do, go ahead, Jeff.
Get my mic, I can go up here. You guys got a tough job ahead of you. I really don't have much of a dog in this fight with the Sheriff's Office, other than, and also fire EMS, other than being a constable, being a law enforcement officer, but I'm a one-man show. But public safety, I don't know enough about fire EMS operations. Sheriff's Department, they need a certain number of deputies and jailers. You need a certain number of EMTs, I'm sure. I would think about, from the Sheriff's Office perspective, administrative positions, yeah, because they need to be a part of everything else, that there's a freeze. If there's a deputy or EMT vacancy, that needs to be filled as soon as possible, not to exceed current levels. I can understand, no more, no extra deputies, no extra investigators, but the numbers are there for public safety. And you've all got a tough job trying to balance that. But that's, that's part of that responsibility is public safety, am I saying it? As a taxpayer, I don't have a problem with saying, hey, if you lose a clerk, just work harder, do more with less, they always say. But when it comes to the operational part of it, if there's way legally looking to be empty, the, the street deputies, the EMTs, that's not, that's not a time, especially in the times we face where you don't, for those deputies, they don't know what they're gonna make on the stop. It's that a guy that's gotta beef against cops. So EMTs are just at risk 'cause somebody's drugged up and they respond to a medical emergency. And, and, or they, or they're slow responding to ones, some because they're waiting for somebody to get their help. I said, I don't have much of a dog in this fight, but I would ask that you consider not imposing that freeze on operational street deputies.
I appreciate it, Jeff. I guess that brings up another good point, which I hadn't thought about. Okay, we do freeze, they have people that, we don't get hired for a month, two months, three months. What about overtime? When the departments have to work overtime to fill the vacancies that's happened, then are we gonna go after that also?
Case by case basis.
Alright, 'cause I, I can see that's coming, if, if some areas lose people, then the other people, like you just said, are gonna have to take up the slack and do the work, so there will be overtime involved. Of course, salary personnel, I know you work over forty, I know that, but like the...
Coming December one, that changes too.
That's true, yeah.
More and more people are subject to overtime, there's now a, you know, they're raising that minimum salary requirement, and, and more and more of our folks are gonna fall below that bar. So they're gonna be subject to overtime regardless of whether they're in a management position or, or not. So it, costs will go up, for sure.
Well, on item number three, I have a motion by Kenneth and a second by Don, do we have any further questions or discussion or comments?
Review what? If you don't take it to the vote, I want a, you know, a clear understanding of what we're voting on.
The way I understand it, y'all clarify me if I'm wrong, you wanna make a freeze on all hiring?
Temporary.
Temporary freeze on all hiring, except for the golf course and the expo, which enterprise funds. And any hiring that's done during this temporary freeze, whether it be elected official or department head, you want that to be brought before Commissioners' Court to approve or disapprove? Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that your understanding?
Has, um, someone come up with a solution to stop the spending at some point? How to replacing people, that's the question.
So, on this trip out, I'm over to vote, Don, you're a vote.
If we, if we have that split to the right percent?
Yes.
Right. Well, that's what we're, we're...
We, we have not officially...
Hasn't with...
Passed that, that, what we're talking about is that sequester, where we're gonna actually sequester ten percent of their budgets, and that they have to live within ninety percent of the budget that's packed. That, that's coming probably in September.
Through the budget, right.
After we print the budget, then we'll immediately put those curves in place.
Forward to the end of September.
And, and, and this motion, I didn't hear an effective date, but that would be effective ninety-one, is that...
September first, twenty sixteen.
Okay, right.
We're starting to back this up as elected officials. Alright, I have a motion by Kenneth, certain by Don, all in favor said motion. That's Larry Hulsey, Kenneth Wood, Don Crants, all opposed, Danny Chambers, John Curtis. Alright, item number four, discuss, take action on freeze for stepping grade for all current county employees effective September first, twenty sixteen. Back to my questions, how many employees are affected by this, and how does this impact the budget? What are y'all's researchs, have you come up with on those numbers?
Well, stepping grade will be about forty thousand dollars. It'll be a little more, the figures that I've got, usually ten, ten percent, all the figures that I've got.
How much is your son?
Forty thousand.
Around forty thousand, a little more.
I guess my second question is, why was the urgency to put this in place September the first instead of October first, when we actually adopted the place? Why did, and the reason I'm asking is because accounting purposes and payroll purposes, is we're gonna have part of this in one fiscal year, part of this in another fiscal year, is that correct, or am I wrong? I mean, jump in here, if I'm way off base, you jump in.
Correct, if, if, if four and five are, are effective on September first, and then subsequently, we come back and say, okay, we're, you know, say we, we've gotten paid and we wanna take it and, and catch the employees back up, to, you know, go back and, and catch them up, then we're talking at least, and I'm talking about a minimum, of a hundred budget transfers. And I know you love them, but it would be, because we would have to go back and amend every department's social security line item, retirement line item, 'cause we didn't budget for that, especially the September part. So, you know, as you look at items four and five, I would beseech you to make that a ten-one effective date, so at least we can close out this budget year with everybody caught up on their step in grade and longevity. And so all we're looking at is the next fiscal year, which we would need budget transfers to catch them back up, it would already have been there.
But they're not talking about catching longevity up?
Well, I mean, it's a possibility, that they could catch it up, you know...
Is that true?
Well, if stepping grade are far longer than the one, they would not accumulate anything while it was thrown.
Well, no, but I mean, if you decided to go back and say, okay, we, we've suspended it, now we're all, you know...
They can pick up from there and go forward.
Okay, so you're not gonna go back and catch them up? Okay.
Well, I mean, that's... So they would be saving county money and having a big hit if you released them.
Say that you're looking at the way it's presented on the ten dollar, like I said, this change...
I just have a real problem with taking money away from the people that have stuck, stuck it out here, and they have the knowledge, you know, you're looking at thirty thousand dollars that you're saving on this amount of budget that we're looking at? And you're going after the people that have stuck with the county and have learned their jobs and...
Fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty.
Have more to offer, and just trying to replace that person, have them come in and learn all that, and just all the knowledge that we're gonna lose. Because morale's gonna go down because you're taking away longevity.
I'm thinking for myself, not, not for the court, but if our win...
But if our windfall comes in down the road, they're one, two, three years away. I would be in favor, win back rectory act.
Okay.
And let's pick up there.
Judge?
If our windfall comes in.
Is there a reason why this was put in here like this, discontinued instead of free?
I thought we wanted discontinued at this time, temporary discontinued. Maybe I'm-
Well, wait, wait five, wait instead of discontinued, that's same thing.
Okay. Well, I guess if we get to that one, we make that motion, we will clarify that. That's my wording, because I thought that's why we wanted it, wording.
I have a question. Do we have implied contracts with employees on these topics?
It's part of our personnel manual as a, as a benefit. But everything in our personnel manual, and have to get, follow up, it's subject to change by the court at any time. I mean, the court can amend it, change it.
I, just as a note, and I could be wrong, but I don't think you can back pay someone if they never received the raise or the longevity pay. You would only be able to do it once it was unfrozen forward, so.
I think that's right. I think once you change the policy, you can't go back.
So, down the racks are looking at number four on the stepping grade, roughly is forty thousand?
Three year?
You need to cut the bill on here. And at the risk of sounding sarcastic and taking on another fight, go ahead, I'll wait. You want me to act as if I didn't say it?
I would like to, and it's counted out for three years, it gives us a lot of thought. I like to see stepping grade go away in a kind of a situation. Like, if we have money, we'll give a raise, if we have money, we'll, step, I mean, the cost of living, whatever. I don't care for, the stepping grade was put in in the nineties for the county. It wasn't put in for the way they're given.
You'd like to review that, rework that?
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons why I like with the freeze-
And more merit bases and more-
Well, if anybody has the money, yes.
Well, the way it's stated now, it doesn't do an employee an incentive to do better, work harder. It's just, they're gonna get it.
That's not true. They don't get a stepping grade unless they have favorable review. That's right.
Well, I agree with you, how many non-favorable?
We've had some.
Well, that's what we're speaking for.
The, the stepping grade also provides uniformity and, and protects the county from lawsuits of discrimination. I mean, you know, the, you know, the buddy, and not saying this would happen ever, but the buddy of the department head is getting more raises where somebody who he doesn't like is not, you know, if they're following the uniform schedule and, and, you know, nobody can be singled out to, to be given more favorable treatment than the other person. You know, so it, it provides, and the second thing it provides is it, it eliminates you gentlemen from being the personnel committee. I mean, for employees coming to you saying, hey, I need more money. You know, I don't really think you want that in your hallway, because there's a stepping grade in place. And people, a job is assigned, a, a salary range, and that's where they start, and the decision's made. And if they want the job, this is the number, and it's not subject to being changed by somebody.
Well, the, the salary's gonna be set anyway. So that's-
Well, if you have a stepping grade, they're interviewed and they're refused, possibly it's time for them to move on.
You know, here again, I know it's super sarcastic and I'm prepared for the fight. But I keep hearing that, you know, this is a group effort, we all need to be involved, we all need to participate. But so far, you know, I see department heads, employees, elected officials, except for this court, giving up. I don't really see us actually participating and giving up to help the matter.
We have given up, and we're still going.
What, did we give up?
We, we did not take the three percent raise anybody got last year. We, me and Larry have not had a raise since we come into office. We cut our seminar expense, we cut our road expense by-
And who did that cause a problem? That hurt the people that you repair the roads for the county, right? That didn't hurt you?
No.
That, that didn't affect our salaries. We're affecting people's salaries and what they take home to their families.
And that's what we're hard for, that's what, that's-
And I've never asked you, I've never asked you.
If the bond falls, we, we won't be getting a salary either.
That's, that's very true. But you know, I came to you, Larry, and I said, hey, I get a little over four thousand travel expense, y'all get a little over eight thousand, I'm willing to go one for one on that travel expense. You remember? I told y'all, do whatever y'all are willing to do, one for one, up to that four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay, let's say if we agreed to give up some now, is the other gonna give it up? Cause we're-
What we're taking it away from. If we take their longevity and we take their stepping grade and we ask them to pay the insurance, they're giving up.
Okay, get to the insurance. If we can do some of these trimmings, maybe we won't have to get into insurance. Judge, you and the other departmentists get with the diff of bill then and tell us what to do.
I'm trying.
How you gonna cut ten percent of this budget without doing something?
I think that we've already cut, four or six hundred thousand, roughly.
They was, they was four hundred thousand on expo, right? Or over three hundred thousand. One, the expo, cut half of what you're talking about, where does it come from?
Just been through all the different departments. I mean, yeah, we can go through that line of allowing, we can right now, it's just not on the agenda. But in our next budget hearing, we can. And I can show you exactly-
Hey, the ones that are against the majority of the court, come up with a better idea of it. The ten percent's gotta come back.
And that, I'm not arguing that, Larry. I'm not arguing, it's a question that asks ten percent of the budget. I'm on board with that. I'm on board with keep taking and taking and taking from employees as far as longevity that they work for, and as far as stepping grade that they work for and deserve. That's what I'm against. I'm not against the ten percent. I'm with you. I'm not against in February or March, if we don't get paid and they truly pay us two hundred sixty-one million, I'm not against having to do drastic measures. I just don't get the urgency of having to do it by September first. As far as these type of situations, can you give me an explanation why the urgency is September first? So maybe I can understand and agree?
Brother, I think everybody needs to gear up.
So, this is the way we gear up?
I don't have a problem with that, I'll cover it, I think it's gonna work better for Susan.
I just think y'all are getting confused on stepping grade and cost of living. Yes, let's hold the cost of living adjustment until we get-
There's not such thing, don't slip, that was in fact.
Exactly.
We haven't given anything, Sharon. Three, one, two, yeah. Well, I guess, do I have a motion on this item?
How do you wanna work it, Governor?
Yes, number four.
I make the motion.
All right. How do you wanna work it?
Freeze the stepping grade. Okay, that's temporary freeze. Which, at the time that the freeze is released, then it will start over. Whatever the word was there, it does not accumulate during that freeze time. And this going effect, the beginning of the budget year, October one, two thousand sixteen.
Okay, correct or wrong? I have a motion to freeze the stepping grade, effective, temporarily, effective October first, twenty sixteen, all in line with the fiscal year. Is that correct? All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Don. Any further questions, discussion, debate, issues, arguments? I guess I got one more question. I just can't get myself. And I've asked you, but I didn't get the answer. A deal is put in place, September, October. We get our money January thirty-first. Everything looks pretty successful, the budget's on track, is what we said at that. Did we come back in February and review these and relieve, remove these temporarily?
Well, we have the money in the bill.
All right. So once the money is there? All right, I have a motion by Kenneth, a second by Don. All in favor, said motion. Oops, sorry, wait a minute, whoops, sorry, I think Don wants to say something.
What? What if it occurs before then?
I, I'm with you, okay? Yeah, if, if we, if we- Well, that's not part of the motion.
And we get the money, then we come back and we review it at any given time? Yes. All right, I have a motion by Kenneth, a second by Don. All in favor, said motion. That's Larry Halsey, Don Krantz, Kenneth Wood, all opposed, Danny Chambers, John Kirks. All right, item number five. Discuss, take action on discontinuing longevity? Maybe discontinuing was a strong word. Suspending temporarily for county employees, effective September first, twenty sixteen. Here again, during y'all's research, how many employees are affected by this, and what is the impact to the budget?
Well, it was looking at only the, the ones that went longevity.
People that have been here longer than ten years.
I didn't take counting them, I was, I had them all up, I was.
Does anyone want to plead out?
Well, yeah, all in favor, please, you have.
I would encourage you to forego this one. Unlike items number, you know, three and four, well, especially four, which would keep the employees' paychecks the same, this particular action is gonna cause employees' checks to go down.
It's twenty-nine people.
Twenty-nine people, next payday, after September first, will be affected. Immediately we'll be removing money from their paycheck.
Hey, you know, from a morale standpoint, their checks are gonna go down.
I'd have to agree with that. We don't, it's one thing, um-
Yes, it is.
I agree.
And if the freeze is lifted on longevity, like if they get six hundred dollars a year, which is only twenty-five dollars paycheck, less taxes, or, but more taxes are taken away. Once the freeze is lifted, we can put that six hundred dollars back in place, right? We don't have to.
I don't, I don't mind, was in reference to wages-
Right.
That were not awarded.
Because the longevity is a-
That would take some research.
Okay.
But even, even a temporary freeze would cause their checks to go down.
Yes.
And I think that, from a morale standpoint, I think that would be very harsh.
Be a decrease for twenty-nine people.
Yeah, and your longest-serving people, your longest, your longest-term employees.
People that spent the longest time with us, in one life, I think thirty-five years, I think.
I, I would encourage this court to, to really think hard on that one.
Haven't we already kinda changed our policy of that?
We've capped it at fifteen hundred.
Last year, we capped it at fifteen hundred.
And, you know, we left those that were, I'd already exceeded that, at that level, but they no longer go up. But, yeah, I just really, I think you're opening something here that you might not really wanna deal with on that one, so.
That's, that's just rocks, speaking.
We're always wanting to handle by this question, but we can't.
Right. And we can always take no action, if no action is decided? All right. So, on item number five, do we have a motion, or do we take no action?
I recommend we take no action on that one.
All right, I have a recommendation, recommendation by Don to take no action. And I definitely agree with that, and the majority of the court agrees with that. All right, so no action's gonna be taken. Item number six is approved budget transfers.
There are none.
And there are none.
That's great.
Wow. I guess next is up to you, Ken.
I make a vote with adjournance meeting.
I have a motion by Kenneth to adjourn.
I'm second, that's okay.
I have a second by Don, all in favor. I think this time we got five votes.